Well, welcome back to the Committee of the Whole meeting for Thursday, June 26th still. And our delegation has been very patient. I'm going to give you another five minutes with your screen share. I'm just going to ask the directors from the District of Seashell if they can test their microphone so we make sure we can hear you.
I can hear you guys just fine. I still can't see you in my Zoom screen, but can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Director. All right, delegation, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. So, as I was saying, this is our request, last point being that we're here to support this process while we have the capacity to do so. And, oh yes, this is where I was at. So, described how lands are qualified for registration or recognition in CP CAD. Just also to say that our Katsum-Hausen Unity Plan, which is our management plan for the UNESCO Biosphere region, has two goals, priority objectives, and that first one is what we're talking about here, which is looking for ways to implement the Canadian Nature Legacy targets towards the global targets as well. So, it contributes in a small way, but also to look at what Bowen Island has actually passed, which is the concept that nature needs half throughout Katsum-Hausen. So, just again, who submits to the CP CAD? That's something that our capacity brings to this. With staff, we would be able to make this process as easy as possible. And already, there's just the release of the updated maps have just come out, but this past year, Bowen Island, Lions Bay, Whistler, and Metro Vancouver Parks have been registered. So, why Gambier Island? There are many parks of the SCRD. We're focused, our efforts based on our ability to, and familiarity with this particular island. Gambier Island currently in CP CAD, only 12% of the island is registered as protected and conserved. That's the crosshatched areas. Those are mostly old growth management areas, and provincial park and nature reserves. These 10 parks would increase that by 1%, but we do want to draw attention to the Islands Trust mandate, which is to preserve and protect the trust area and its unique amenities and environment for the Mandate of BC. So, the 10 parks that SCRD has are listed here, and each of these parks has unique features. Most of them, many of them, of course, are bordering the foreshore, and so that connectivity with the ocean and the natural buffering that they bring to other parts of the island are really important. I'd point out this largest parcel that we've identified of Pete Shields Park on the east side of Gambier Island, as you can see from this aerial shot, is nestled next to the Mount Artaban Nature Reserve and Halkit Bay Provincial Park. So, this parcel is one of the largest parcels, and it provides, it's very steep, the topography is very steep. It provides, it's completely undisturbed right now, apart from, of course, previous logging activity, which is now many years ago, but is regrowing naturally, and it provides a buffer between these two parks, as well as many of these properties that have covenants on them. This particular park is zoned currently as rural residential. So, again, a number of these parks, I won't go through them all, but they all have, you know, are very dense and have tremendous ecological value. So, that's really the portion about recognizing these lands for their current status in CP CAD. The second part here is just bringing your attention, it's in the report of the various types of zoning that currently exists for these parks, and so the request is really to, maybe it's finishing unfinished business. We know there's a current OCP review going on on Gambier Island, so this is a good time to be looking at ensuring that those, the zoning is in alignment with the park's use and important ecological values that it brings, but also respecting Squamish Nation rights and titles. And from our preliminary outreach to the nation, the concern there is to ensure that it does not impose on their, the current agreements around and future agreements around access and rights and title. So, that's our request. I'm going to leave it there, keep it short, and if you have any questions, where Sam and I are here to answer those for you.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to open the floor for questions from our directors to the delegation. And I'm going to try to keep my eye on the raising hands portion of our new software, but I'll ask you that you raise your hands physically. I can see, Director Inkster, did you raise your hand, or were you just adjusting your glasses? Okay. Any questions? There we go. Director Stamford, you go ahead.
Sorry, my speaker's request isn't coming up, but we'll keep working on that. First of all, thank you so much, Ruth and Samantha. Even just by itself, this is very valuable information. I have a couple of questions and comments. One of them, have you had a chance to provide some of this information to the Islands Trust Conservancy or to the Gambier Island Conservancy? Is that part of your dissemination list for this report?
Yes, we've been in touch with Carol and made them aware of this presentation today. Also, the correspondence was in with the Islands Trust, your local trust committee. And there has been some preliminary sort of scouting of certainly the Pete Shields Park with staff from Islands Trust Conservancy. So, Gambier Island Conservancy is in early stages of awareness and being engaged, but also the Islands Trust Conservancy is in early stages.
Thank you.
Follow up?
Yeah, I have other questions, but--
Okay, well, I'll go to Director McMahon. She's managed to get into the electronic hand raising. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I really enjoyed that report, particularly since these are parks that most of us are not going to have the opportunity to visit. So, the descriptions were really very much appreciated. I'm just wondering if I could direct a question to our staff, because I'm trying to understand, we're not in charge of land use planning for the islands. That's the Islands Trust. So, what is the connection between us and parks? Like, do they declare parks and then we take on the responsibility for them, or how does that work? Do we know?
I'm looking to staff to answer that. Are you aiming that question at any particular staff, or whoever would like to tackle that question?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the question. Without our GM of planning here, I'll take a stab at it, but my assumption would be that to rezone our park, we would work with Islands Trust, and we would need to work within the zoning options that they have to rezone a park accordingly.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Director Toth, who hasn't spoken yet. Go ahead, Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. I'm assuming this being parks function related, if there's any recommendations, I wouldn't be voting on them anyways. But I was just wondering what implications submitting these lands for Conservancy protection would have on the SCRD's ability to make any parks improvements. You know, we think of the easy things, playgrounds or fields and things like that. I recognize that's not a high likelihood on Gambier Island, but does submission to a Conservancy of some form basically sanitize the SCRD's ability to do any work in those parks, including trail building? Thank you.
Sam, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can take that one. Hi, everyone. Well, any lands that are registered in the Canadian Protected and Conserved Areas database can be removed from the database if they no longer qualify, but there is an allowance of, I believe it's either 20 or 25% of the land can be used for recreation, but the other 70, 75%, 80% needs to be achieving institute conservation of biodiversity. However, it's a very case-by-case basis, but we always emphasize with this work that registering these lands in the Canadian Protected and Conserved Areas database, contributing to Canada's 30x30 target, does not come with any legal mechanisms in place or any restrictions on what you can and cannot do to the land. However, they can become a scenario where they no longer qualify if they're no longer achieving institute conservation of biodiversity under their criteria.
That's a good answer. I'm going to go to Director Stamford. You have some more questions.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to follow up a little bit more. As I also am the Islands Trustee for Gambier, one of three members of the local trust committee. It is one of the, I'm going to call them challenges or opportunities here, that for the Islands Trust has been given the mandate of land use. So, we do promote and designate parkland, primarily in this case through subdivision amenity. But then, that is, becomes the responsibility of Sunshine Coast Regional District in terms of how it's managed. And so, there is a bit of a work towards coordinating how the Islands Trust vision versus the vision of parks in the regional district. How do we coordinate that? How do we move forward together, given that there's challenges on both sides? So, that sort of helps describe the layering that's going on here. And I think that's part of where we need to be better coordinated on how those two aspects, those two sides of park existence and park development and management in the long term, how that works together. So, one of my questions is, for this designation, do private covenants come into this at all? Is there a possibility of including private covenants in this kind of designation?
Sam, do you?
Yeah, I can answer that. It's not a part of the process formally, but it would strengthen the rationale for being able to qualify to be registered into the database if there was a covenant in place. One of the categories of the Decision Support Tool, which is the Pan-Canadian Framework for registering, and we work, I work closely with staff at Environment and Climate Change Canada on our other lands that we're in the process of registering. And it's very case-by-case, and they're very supportive. But if, so basically, that would strengthen the mechanisms that are in place to ensure that these lands would be protected in perpetuity. So, it would, they would maybe be registered as a protected area status in the database as opposed to an other effective conservation measure. So, it wouldn't hurt, is basically the short answer, but it's not a part of the process as a requirement.
Thank you. I'm going to let my Vice Chair, Stamford, Director Stamford, continue. She seems to be our point person for this. So, go ahead.
You were, part of this request is speaking to divestiture options. Could somebody speak a little bit more to that? How you see that possibility happening? To whom? Those kinds of questions?
Yes, I can speak to that. We, I mean, I think the situation of some of these parks, should there be a desire to see them protected in perpetuity, could, with permission, spark an interest in, you know, the funds, finding the funds required if that's of interest to the SCRD to look to other ways of managing these lands in perpetuity. So, that, for instance, the Nature Conservancy of Canada, BC Parks Foundation, Islands Trust Conservancy, BC Parks, or even private ownership that would put a covenant on the land that would protect it in perpetuity. The process for arriving at a value is something that we're not familiar with. So, but if there was an interest in working with us to explore this opportunity, then, in some direction to seek out information, do the research, then we'd be happy to do that.
Yes, Director Stamford, you have more questions?
Just a comment, and as there's nobody else.
Okay, we'll put you on next.
So, I was just going to conclude that although I'm not, I'm not going to put a motion forward at this point, because that's not how we do delegations. This is, we're very aware of this. There is going to be a meeting with Islands Trust. This will be a part of the discussion point. It is more complex than a simple zoning change, but I do recognize you've got your, the deadlines around 30x30. So, I'm hoping that we can move some adjustments here and move to try and accommodate this designation, because I think it's really important from a regional perspective as well. And these parks are very small, but the fact that we have them, it's good to be able to benefit from them in many different ways. So, that's sort of where I'm standing right now, and I will be working with Islands Trust to make sure their zoning is where they should be, because I'd also noticed with the mapping that some of the maps that you've described are different from some of the zoning maps that I'm looking at. So, there is some, seems to be some discrepancy at the Islands Trust side of the zoning designation of some of these. So, that's another thing I'll be looking at.
Okay. Thanks. Just to say to the rest of the directors that BC Nature is also another organization that is very willing to help any of the local governments with identifying and going through this process of recognizing lands that qualify. So, this is an opportunity for all. We just focused our efforts on this island right now.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to final speaker, I hope, Director McMahon. You go ahead.
Yes. I'm just wondering if this type of designation has any implications for our park review that's underway or about to be underway. We have a lot of parkland, the SCRD, and we, I went through the Parks Master or the Recreation Master Plan, and we have different designations for types of park. But we don't actually have, like, an environmental preservation designation. We have green space, and green space could mean a bunch of different things. But I'm interested in whether we might be looking at stronger environmental designations for park space as part of that parks review.
I think that's a question for staff. GM of Parks, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Chair. So, the parks review is definitely looking at how we designate our parks in terms of whether they're regional green spaces and then attaching a service level to that. You are correct. We don't have anything in our Recreation and Parks Master Plan right now around conservation areas or environmental areas. The plan itself isn't going to provide any formal processes that we would need to do with our planning folks in terms of formal designation or zoning, and that's what this group is suggesting, right? That a park might be zoned park and/or designated as a park, but to actually zone it as an OEM, OES, CM, sorry. That's kind of the legislative hammer, so to speak, or the framework that really does preserve it for conservation. And so, out of the Park Service Review, if parks conservation becomes a recommendation that's made and the board wants to focus on conservation and environmental conservation, then we would see that start to flesh out through how we quote-unquote designate our parks in our Park Service Review, and then the service level that goes with it. But, you know, I remind everybody that even parks that are conservation parks will still require a management plan and, you know, oversight. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. I think we've exhausted this one for now. I want to thank the delegation, and I want to make sure that everyone recognizes that we've been a signature to an agreement with the United Nations to try to create, they call it 30x30 by 30. It's the 30% of our land space, 30% of our water space, and to be put aside for conservation in some way, shape, or form by 2030. And I'm well in support of this, and I think it should be put aside for the use of, nature use for our population close to our homes. And again, thank you for the delegation, and I'm going to move on.
Thank you for having us. Bye-bye.
To, bye-bye. To reports, we have 4.1 in front of us, which is the, what's, Compliance Monitoring for Church Road Well Field and Grantham's Landing Water Treatment Plant, Somes Creek Contract Amendment. And we have Matt O'Rourke, Assistant Manager Utility, and Sandy Bander, Environment and Planning Coordinator. Would you like to introduce this report for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to propose an amendment to the existing contract with ISL Engineering and Land Services Limited. The reason for this amendment is because the Ministry of Water, Lands, and Resource Stewardship now requires several additional years of environmental monitoring and reporting, which is now a part of our water license. The proposed amendment covers the necessary activities for the remainder of 2025, and this will be an interim measure while we undertake procurement process for a longer-term monitoring program, which may take up to five years. Thank you, and if you have any questions, staff will be happy to answer them.
I see Alton Toth has his hand up. Go ahead, Director Toth.
Thank you, Kelly Wachs, Chair Wachs. If I look at the top of page three of the report, it mentions that a five-year monitoring period would ultimately be required. And so, I'm wondering, like, we're about to enter year three of monitoring, but it mentions 2026 to 2030. So, are we going to be looking at an eight-year monitoring period, or are we still awaiting confirmation from Walrus? Like, will two more years get us over the finish line? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. The two-year monitoring period that we've already done was a post-commissioning monitoring, and in our talks with the ministry, they've outlined that we probably have to do another five years, and within each year of that five years, we can reassess. But it looks like it'll be up to five years of additional monitoring.
Thank you for the answer. Anyone else? Oh, there's somebody. Director Lee, you've found the speakers button. Go ahead.
Actually, I was trying to find it. I did. Curiosity here in that on page 26 of 51, I'm not sure how you'd describe it in the Escribe thing, but it says that we were going to decommission the original Artesian well, but it looks like it must be spilling over and flowing into Somes Creek, and it looks like something we have to keep doing. Have I got that correct?
Yes, you're correct. Yes.
Sorry?
Apparently, yes, it is, that is correct.
So, we made our own little creek to go into a creek?
I guess we have. It's a new riparian area? Very good. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Would staff like to? Nope. Okay. So, we have a recommendation that comes along with this report. Go ahead, Director Stamford.
I would like to move the recommendation as presented at 4.1.
And I see a secondor for that. Is there any comment or questions on the recommendation? Okay. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? That passes. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to 4.2. Valve stamps for Selma 2 Isolation Project Budget Increase. And I'm going to look to staff to explain this one to me. GM of Infrastructure Services, you can go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. As part of the 2022 budget process, the border proof funds replace critical components of large valves that are intended to isolate our Selma 2 reservoir. The Selma 2 reservoir is the largest of the SDRD's reservoirs and is located next to the Chapman Water Treatment Plant. It has a capacity of about 14 million liters of water. Isolation of the reservoir is essential for maintenance, downstream repairs, and emergency response. Over the past several years, staff worked with engineers and suppliers on an approach to replace these valves, and had also divers go into the reservoirs to inspect the valves and remain of the reservoir. These investigations revealed that two additional valves no longer have appropriate seals and are leaking and are no longer being able to be operated, as well as several auxiliary components that now require replacement or repair. Until these valves are functional again, the 40 million liters of water that is in the reservoirs cannot be controlled, which elevates operational safety and environmental risks. As staff identified that these risks require urgent attention, it is requesting a budget increase outside of the regular budget process to allow all these works to be completed as soon as possible. And staff are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, General Manager. It appears to me that this project was, has taken a different turn, and so that the original, the original budget was not looking at the entire project that we've come across. And so, that's the reason for this ask. I'm going to go to Director Toth. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. In fact, I was going to speak a little bit to that myself. If you look at the original recommendation from 2011, sorry, 2021, it was only $75,000. And, you know, in the four years since then, we've seen materials go up, we've seen labor go up, you know, we've had some scope change because of, you know, continuing to age assets. When I first saw this report, I was a little horrified at an increase from 75 to $325,000. But in the grander scheme of things, like, if this was a project that we were scoping this year, a third of a million dollars is really not unreasonable. So, I'd actually like to move the recommendations on page one of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. We have a secondor for that. I do have a speaker's list-- Thank you, Director. We have a secondor for that. I do have a speaker's list. Director McMahon, do you wish to speak on the motion?
Actually, I was going to make the motion, and Director Toth got there ahead of me. I'm still picturing the diver in our reservoir. That's, that's kind of interesting. I, I take it we don't have the ability when there's, there's heavy demand on our reservoirs to actually drain a reservoir so that we can work on it, or is that difficult? I'm just curious.
A curiosity question for our GM.
Thank you. Draining the reservoir would mean that your tap would be dry. So in order for us to do it, we can split the reservoir in two halves, where we can drain one side and work on the other side, but it would require us to have an operating valve. So currently, and that's currently the issue, we cannot stop the water. It needs to be fully full, and we cannot drain it at any point in time at the moment. And the reservoir is more or less a big concrete tank. So the only way to get in there is through a hatch in the roof. So when it's full, it requires drivers and specialized drivers, divers.
And are they videotaping this work? Because that would be very interesting to see. But I'm going to go ahead to Director Stanford. Do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. You mentioned that the, or staff have mentioned that the reservoir is leaking. I don't have a sense of how much it's leaking. Like, is it liters? I don't know what, anything bigger than that is thousands of liters? Yeah, I want a sense of the size of the leaks.
Thank you. As part of the 2025 budget process, the board approved funding to address leaks. And we currently don't have a clear estimate of actually how much it is, because it's a mix of water that's coming in to one area, backwash water, filtration water from our, from the plant itself, as well as leak water. But we know that it is definitely more than we want it to be.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. I have a motion on the, in front of us, and I don't see any other hands up. So I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Very good. That passes. Thank you, GM. I'm going to move on to item 4.3, the Langdale Well Field Construction Project. And it seems to be authored by Sherri Reed, Corporate Officer. Would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. This report is coming forward to initiate financing for the Langdale Well Field Construction Project as approved in the 2025 budget process. Staff are seeking decision on the preferred borrowing term and have provided three options for the committee's consideration. A timeline detailing next steps pertaining to the required elector approval process has also been provided on page four of the report. And staff are here to answer any questions, should the committee have them.
Thank you very much. So I see Alton Toth has a, Director Toth, would you like to go ahead and ask your question?
Thank you, Chair. I want to say thank you to the Corporate Officer. This report is super clean. It's super easy to read and understand the implications. I think members of the public that are curious about what these projects cost us and when we look at options, I mean, page four of the report is easy to screenshot and send to somebody. My question for the Corporate Officer, or maybe for the Finance Team, 20 years seems to be the shortest option that's being presented. I'm wondering if staff ran any numbers on, like, a 15-year option. Thank you.
That's an interesting question. Our Chief Administrative Officer may have an answer.
Thank you, Chair. So what we typically do when we assess different types of borrowing is essentially the lifespan of the asset. And in the case of this one, this is, I think, the, the lower end of the, the asset lifecycle. So 20 years would be a reasonable timeframe. It's also in the sense of how MFA does borrowing. You have to typically pick a debenture and a debt timeframe. And 15 years could be feasible, but we'd have to work with MFA as far as how that would work for them, because usually they do 10-year increments. So if we were doing a reduced term, we might have to have a special consideration. We also, when we did this budget proposal from the debt financing and signaling to staff, to the community, when this budget approval was completed, was that this would be the estimated cost and term. So we're just keeping to what we had presented in prior reports.
Thank you. I'm going to move to Kate Stanford. Director Stanford, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just looking at the table on page four of the report and, and the annual tax, parcel tax implication. Just to confirm that this parcel tax would be to everyone within the regional water service. And I follow.
Yeah. So is that everyone who is currently on the Chapman Water System? And wells?
It would actually be everyone within the regional system. And so that is how this particular function works. So it would be for the regional water service, function 370. So anyone within that boundary.
But does not include the North and South Pender? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So a follow-up, more of a comment is, it just emphasizes the imperative that I'll be looking at how to move Eastbourne Water System into some other form. So I'll be sort of looking at the process for that, just because they will never be able to benefit from any increase that these, this particular well or any other service on the mainland can provide them. So I'm going to be looking at how that happens and the implications of that, but that'll be further down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stanford. I'm sure the people of Eastbourne really appreciate your work. I'm going to move to Director McMahon. Go ahead.
Yes. So that handy table tells me essentially that we, we buy five years at a cost of about $2 million in, in additional interest. So obviously, I can see the advantages of a somewhat shorter term. I'm just wondering if there are any other implications of a longer versus a shorter term, for instance, in the amount of, like, borrowing room we have as an organization?
So regional districts do not actually have the same type of legislation that municipalities have. We actually don't have a debt servicing limit. However, the board has a policy that mirrors a lot of the same things for community charters, which is the 15% revenue and contemplation for the organization, just from a financial health perspective. So those would be considerations as you're taking on more debt and as staff have been providing reports, we are starting to see a significant increase in our debt servicing. And we're seeing a trend where we're going to be probably taking a lot more debt on because of these large infrastructure projects.
Very good. Director Gabiass, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I completely agree with Director Toth. Really liked this report, enjoyed the table, and it gives us a really concrete tool, I think, for, for communication to our community. For me, this is a great way to talk about conservation. Because like, we have, like, this is how much these projects cost. Yes, we need to add to the supply, but we also need to work on conservation and increase conservation. So, because this is one of, as our CEO just said, like, there's going to be more multimillion-dollar projects coming. So for me, like, this is really, it's a very useful tool. I have a question about grants. And we saw that we've been able to reduce the amount of borrowing through some grants and Community Works Fund, which is really good. Are there, when does the door close to grants? Like, are, are staff still looking at more grants for this project, or is this done? And if there, if there were to be more grants, how would they be integrated in the, in regards to, like, the borrowing?
That's an interesting question. It would be nice if we could get grants every year to pay this bill, but I don't think that's a possibility. You have some comments?
Every grant has different types of terms and conditions. We continue to scan grant opportunities. For instance, there is the new SPF grant that's been announced by the federal government. So that's through the Canada Build Fund. So we will, staff are actually exploring whether or not this is a candidate for that. And similar to the volumetric billing and the metering project, and we actually got approval to borrow, and we were successful with the grant. So we were able to reduce the overall cost to ratepayers.
Thank you. Director McMahon, you have another question?
I have a comment, and then I'm going to move a motion. But my comment is that I often hear from people in the community who are saying, well, we're paying more money, but we're not getting more water. And it's not, this is not like a private company providing a service. We are the owners of this system, and we have to build the system. So it's like building a house. You spend a lot of money before you can move into this house. And that's the way it is here, too. We have to spend the money upfront before we can actually get the benefit from these projects. Having said that, I would like to move staff's recommendations on page either one or 33, depending on which way you're looking at this agenda.
I'm looking for clarification. There's separate recommendations. I believe there's a question of the, the length of the loan. Is that the decision that staff is looking for us to decide today?
The recommendation does say 20 years.
20 years. Very good. Okay. I see a secondor on that motion. And do we have any questions on this 20-year term? I don't see any hands, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Very good. So that passes. Thank you, staff. We're going to move on to the Seashore Landfill Contract Water Pond Relocation, item 4.4. And we have, who is our manager, Saul, and senior coordinator, McCullough? Very good. And also, we have, I forgot.
Jesse.
Jesse, thank you. All right. Would you like to go ahead and introduce this item? Thank you.
I have a brief intro, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Saul for some details after. So relocating the Seashore Landfill Contract Water Pond from the active tipping face of the, of the dump to the previously decommissioned drop-off area, it was intended to extend the site's lifespan and maintain environmental compliance. By clearing the pond from the operating footprint, the region gains new airspace for waste, while also meeting the requirements for stormwater management on the site. The construction of this new water pond is now complete. However, during the construction, several factors have pushed the project beyond its previously approved budget. Original design drawings had underestimated the volumes of soil that we were going to have to remove, resulting in additional excavation, hauling, and placement of materials. This was in part due to not having sufficient detailed surface elevation data when the, when the project was designed. The volume of asbestos-containing material, which is the, the bulk of the risk on the project, actually ended up being 2.8 times the original estimated volume. This arose from both deeper deposits than we had records of, and also material that we encountered outside of the documented area. So where we expected to find granular sand fill, there was buried asbestos-containing drywall materials. The extra earthworks lengthened the job, increased manpower time, equipment time, and construction engineering time. And the increased volume of asbestos-containing materials triggered further updates to both the design operations, closure plan, and the related monitoring documents. The potential cost overruns emerged at the start of excavation, but continued throughout. Like, as we proceeded to dig the hole, we encountered numerous extra pockets of material. Staff did act to reduce, reduce the overages by minimizing scope wherever possible, and both increasing the amount of staff time to make sure we were monitoring things exceptionally closely, and introduced a different rate structure for several of the components of the project. This combined to substantially reduce the budget shortfall. But unfortunately, we're here today asking you guys for an increase. The construction completed substantially on the 28th of May. Staff did consider the option of pausing the work mid-construction to seek a budget amendment, but that would have exposed the SCRD to contractual risks, delaying the contractor and having them idle on site. It also risks pushing the project completion date into the fall, which would have not been ideal for either the SCRD in terms of stormwater management on site with an active construction project, as well as for the, the situation the contractor would find themselves in. Staff have evaluated the project and taken steps that should reduce the, sorry, we've evaluated this project specifically and are implementing steps to reduce future risk on similar projects to ensure that we don't encounter these kind of unforeseen overages in the future. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Saul for some of the, some of the good news.
Yeah, thank you. So in terms of, of good news, as my colleague stated, one of the goals of this project was to extend the life of the Seashore landfill. And our preliminary analysis has indicated that it, it has been successful in doing so, and we may have up to six additional years of landfill life instead of four. So when we look at the business case again, the cost to haul waste off-coast would have been an additional $4 million per year. So doing this project has protected taxpayers from as much as $24 million in total over the six years that we gain, as compared to, to exporting. So if we look at this project in, as a whole, it costs $1.7 million, including design and construction. And that works out to roughly $283,000 per year. So the business case is still very good. You're looking at $283,000 per year compared to an additional $4 million per year for waste export. And staff are happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Manager Saul. You really kind of put it into a nice little package for us to look at. It's, there are four items of increase in this, and none of them are very good news, but it's good to hear that staff has made some good decisions, and they've managed to save us a couple dollars on the way. And I am going to go to Director McMahon. You have questions about this?
Yes. Our landfill continues to deliver interesting surprises. We got a lot more than last term, but it still comes. This additional two years to six years, what year does that take us to?
I'm going to mark it in my calendar.
Thank you. So we, we won't have an official date until we complete our annual survey and receive our liability letter that we submit to the province. So we won't know with certainty until early next year. But approximately, this will give us till 2032.
Manager, so the, the, the new relocation, relocated pond is where we had the sinkholes that forced us to move our, our drop-off area, where we, where the original landfill, we don't call it a dump anymore, was, it was drywall. So in that, and so that's when you started digging in to create this pond, you, you, you found a lot of drywall. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from any of the other directors? Director McMahon, you want to go ahead?
Well, I just thought we should move staff's recommendations on page one of the report.
I see a secondor for that. And I don't see any other hands. Oh, Director Gabiass, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thanks. Well, did I hear correctly that this project is now complete? Okay. Well, that's great. We don't, we don't always celebrate those here, so that's great. And happy to hear that there's been some, a review of the project and how to, how to avoid these situations in the future. I mean, it's, it's not an ideal situation, but it, it, as Manager Saul so nicely explained, it yielded some good results. And yeah, I think like with, had, had the, And yeah, I think like with, had, had the, the cost been $1.3 million back when we approved it, I think we would have still gone with that because the business case was so strong. And great to hear that there's two additional years. I mean, the process, again, glad to hear that there, there's been, there's some steps that are being taken to, to avoid that in the future. But I just wanted to kind of highlight, yeah, it's complete. It's great.
Yeah, it is.
We can smile at that.
It's unusual for the, for staff to come to us after the fact, but it's understandable given the, given the facts. And I recommend that any other bad news that's delivered by staff should be spear pointed by Director Saul because he does it so well. So we have a motion on the floor. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Very good. I just want to note that the directors from Seashell, from the District of Seashell have left the meeting, they have their own meeting. And that's why they don't appear on the screen anymore. I will move on to Site Operations, item 4.5. Site Operations for the South Coast Resident, what is this? Let me have a look. Site Operations Services for South Coast Residential Green Waste Drop Off Depot Contract Extension, item 4.5. And Manager Saul, you want to introduce this one?
Yes, thank you. So before you, you have a proposed contract extension for consideration. And it relates to site operations at the South Coast Green Waste Drop Off Depot. So the current contract includes an option to extend for one year. We have our current contractor, Sailor Shoals, who's providing satisfactory service. And so staff are recommending that we utilize that one year extension to next year. And staff are happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Yeah, I looked over this and it's a fairly standard, an extra year added on at about the same price. But I'm going to ask if Director McMahon would like to say anything because it is in your area and you do seem to have a, an affinity for this particular item?
Oh, thank you. I have an enormous pile of yard waste sitting in my yard right now, waiting transport to this very facility. So yeah, I guess I have a vested interest in it. Just before moving this recommendation, is there any chance that we could rename this the Yard Waste Facility? Because people get confused between green waste as in yard waste and green bins as in organics recycling.
And or recycling, yeah. What are the, what are the steps that the board would have to take to rename such a facility?
I'm not actually sure if there is a procedure in place for renaming it. So it may be very straightforward, simply updating our website. And that's that. And then, or at least on the communicating face to the public, we call it the Yard Waste Depot, even if this contract refers to green waste.
Thanks. I know, I, this would mean of me to throw a curve ball. In the meantime, I would also like to move the recommendations on page 44.
I see a secondar and Director, or Director DiAndrade, do you have a question? You have your hand up.
Thank you. I don't really have a question. I just want to thank because it's important for the town of Gibson's not to have the service interrupted. So that's great and fully support.
Good. So we have a motion on four, in item 4.5 on the floor. I don't see any other questions, so I'm going to call the motion. All in favor? Very good. So that passes. Thank you Director Saul, Manager Saul. We have one final item on today's agenda. It is, let me have a look at this. It is the final 2025-2026 Sunshine Coast Transit Services Annual Operating Agreement, the AOA, item 4.6. Director, or sorry, General Manager Gangio, would you like to introduce this for us?
Good morning, thank you Chair. Just, I think the report's fairly straightforward. Just very glad to be able to bring this forward and to see no material changes between the draft and the, the final. As we know, we have different financial periods than the province has. So this is always a little bit complex. But it is before you today with a recommendation to execute the agreement. B C Transit's letter to me does indicate that they want it back by June 30th. I have not indicated that it needs to go straight to board because they've let me know that as long as they have a good idea that it's going forward and they get it relatively quickly in July, it's all right. But certainly if the board wants to move it right to the board meeting this afternoon, that's up to you. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Very good. So I am looking around to see if anybody has any questions on that. Oh, Anne Marie, go ahead, Director.
Thank you. I just like a reminder what will be the plans for 25-26. I believe there's increase on route for the weekends for Route 90. Can you do just a synthesis? Because I see here the highlights of 2024 service, but I just want to be reminded what will be for the year 25-26. Maybe doesn't need to be all details, but just the main improvements.
Thank you Chair. I'm just pulling up a report so that I didn't misquote it. So I think you're referring to the expansion that has been approved for 2025-2026. So in July, we do have some hours that are going to be added to our Route 90 to address some of our peak capacity challenges. And that will go effective in July. But the majority of the expansion for both custom and conventional will not occur until January because they both require additional fleet units. So there's an additional 2,700 annual service hours that are being added to our Route 90, which will increase the frequency to 30 minutes on weekdays from 5:00 AM, or sorry, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then there's additional 2,900 service hours that is being added to our custom transit service to address some of our peak load challenges. And that will also be an additional vehicle, an additional handy dart vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you GM. And I believe the amount of hours that are being added in July is 800. And so that will be additional hours on the 90 that will pick up some slack at the ferry and in peak hours. So that's going to happen next, next month. Do you have another question? Okay, you're going to move it? So we have, we have a motion in 4.5 and I, and we have a secondar. And I, I'm going to look to the Corporate Officer and ask that we make a separate motion afterwards to move it direct to board or how does this work? Or do we need to?
Thank you Chair. I believe the GM indicated that it wasn't necessary. So it's at the board's discretion if they so choose to move it forward. Otherwise, it'll go forward within our normal process and you'll see it in two weeks.
Oh no, I'm fine. We can take care of it now. I see the, the need to keep things moving. So I have a, a motion. Director Lee, do you have a question or? We don't, we don't have to. We can just, we can deal with it right now. So I'm going to call a question? Oh, the question is to the motion that's on the, at 4.6, which is, and that the delegated authorities be authorized to execute the agreement, really. Okay, all in favor? Very good. You're not in the service. Okay, very good. So that is dealt with and we don't need to bring that to board at all. So it'll just come through. Okay, thank you. Thank you everyone for your patience today. Item five is communications. I don't see any communications. Item six is new business, no new business, there is no in camera. I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. No, are we, oh, are, I am going to look to see if our resident reporter would like to ask any questions. You can go ahead Connie. Maybe she doesn't want to have, ask any questions or maybe we're having technical issues. Did you just hang up on her?
No Chair, she's promoted and she can unmute herself and speak if she so wishes.
If she, if she so wish. Okay Connie, we're going to make a motion to adjourn then. I see motion, I see a secondar. I don't see a secondar, where? Yes, there we go. All right, thank you very much ladies and gentlemen. We're going to vote on this for adjournment. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.